So let's go ahead and call the talent city council study session of November fifteenth to order roll call please.
Here.
Here. Thank you Lucero. The next item on the agenda is discussion on water rates study with HDR staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a representative today from HDR who's prepared to give this presentation and all of a sudden Tessa, I would like you to introduce our guest. Tessa, would you like to introduce our guest? Zaya flew down from Seattle this morning, so he's been with us for most of the day and we're happy to have the extra buy in City Hall.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Very positive.
Welcome. Thank you. Oh. Get to go ahead and then we'll run into it.
So Josiah, maybe you can introduce yourself by talking a little bit about HDR while we're overcoming our type.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. So I work with HDR Engineering. I've been doing it for about 10 years primarily in utility rates. So we work in water and wastewater mainly, and we also do solid waste and garbage all over the West Coast and around the country. So this is exactly what we do. We do SDCs as well, other miscellaneous fees for utilities. And that's what we devote most of our time to. My team is four of us, two in Seattle and one in Spokane and then myself, I'm in Vancouver, Washington. So we're all pretty local northwest and we've worked with Medford Water Commission. We've met Tessa there. As we've worked, I think with Phoenix and some other areas as well. So.
Recording in progress.
All right, there we go. Good to go. You're going to be running it? All right. If you skip ahead, I know that's my cue. I need to get going.
You know, you're trying to.
And Mayor, I'll leave it up to you. We can take questions as I go through this, if that's your preference, or I can get them during and at the end. Usually I'm open to either, but I don't want people to forget if there's some points that they want to address or talk about.
Great. I'll now serve at the pleasure of the council tonight. So if you guys have questions, just go and.
Try to get my intentions. All right. So as Tessa said, we've been working for about the last month and a half, just getting into the rate study. We met with staff today at length to discuss a lot of assumptions and where we want to go with things. So we wanted to come before you all today and talk about the process we go through when we set rates, what we consider, the assumptions we use, some of the methodologies, the industry standard approaches that we use, and then get your input feedback. You know what your pulse on this, the community is saying, you know, what people are saying. So next slide. So we'll talk about the purpose of a rate study. We'll look at some of the key issues that we're anticipating. And then we can get some of yours as well. If there's some in addition to that, we'll talk about the process and then the next steps. So the purpose of the rate study in general, we want to, yes, next slide, please. Thank you. We want to provide adequate revenue to operate, maintain the utility. So we're setting rates at a level that cover our costs. And those costs include the operational costs, the day-to-day salaries, benefits, materials and supplies, as well as any capital considerations, both now and to the future. We want to make sure we're incorporating future costs so that we're operating the utility in a sustainable way and that we can anticipate any large expenses coming up in the future and plan for those accordingly, so that we can make small incremental adjustments instead of trying to react to big costs that may come down the line. And that's a big component in developing the cost basis for rates. We use both the industry standard methodologies and then coupled with your budget and financial projections to make sure that the rates we're charging customers are reflecting the cost that it takes for the utility to provide service to them. We also want to look at prudent financial planning criteria. So debt service coverage ratios, that's your measure of leverage for the utility. So looking at after we pay for operating expenses, how much do we have left to pay debt service? And any other costs, we look at our level of rate funding of capital. I'll say that term a few times during the presentation. Basically, that's our capacity within rates to fund capital projects on a, on a cash basis. So we're not going out for debt. You know, you can think of this on your car as getting tires or gas windshield wipers. We don't want to go out to the bank and ask them for money to do that. We want to pay for that as we go with cash. And so that's a component of rates that we want to build in because as assets depreciate on the system, they lose their useful life. We want to make sure that we're reinvesting in the system at a level that maintains that high level of service for customers. And again, developing it based on our industry standard approaches. Next slide, please. We have the M1 manual by the American. We will have the. That's it. It's just a picture, but what this manual does is it outlines the methodology that we go through. So how we handle specific costs? What considerations we want to build into the rates, things like the rate funding of capital, reserves, debt service coverage, those kind of things. So this is our check to make sure we're establishing rates in a manner that is generally accepted among the industry. Of what the M1 manual goes through for the process is a three-step process here. The revenue requirement, the cost of service and the rate design, and I'll go into these in more detail. The revenue requirement is where we develop the balance or deficiency of funds essentially. So we look at our current revenues, both rate revenues and any miscellaneous revenues we get. And then we'll back out the expenses and from that we can develop a balance or deficiency of funds and that will tell us going forward if we need to adjust rates, the level of rates. The cost of service then takes those expenses for a specific year, our test year. And we go through a process where we look at the function of those costs, what they do for the system. And we distribute costs between the different customer classes of service. So easy ones are residential or commercial irrigation, those kind of classes that you may have seen. And so this process moves the costs into the customer classes which incur those costs. So based on how they use water, primarily we're looking at average day usage, peak day usage. So in the summer when they're really watering and then customer costs. So those are the main components that we'll look at. And then in the rate design, we take the results from the revenue requirement, which gives us our level of rate adjustment we may need. And the cost of service, which tells us to which customer class is attributable to those costs. And we can then develop rates. And in the rate design, we're also able to incorporate any policy from you all as to what the structure may be. We also look at, you know, industry standard or contemporary rate making structures. And we can incorporate that within the rate design analysis. So some key issues we look at first and foremost, we want to make sure we're recovering the cost of the utility. Again, starting with the operating budget, we escalate that out over time. And we also want to include capital costs within that. And all those considerations together are what we want to have the utility rate support. We also have the projection of purchased water. That's going to be a key of cost within the operating budget. The debt service payment schedules, there are some balloon payments that we want to make sure we anticipate for ahead of time and plan for. Capital projects for the system, again, making sure that we're operating the system to a high level of service. And that means reinvesting in the system as we utilize the assets. And then another key issue is the rate structures by customer class. So that is one area where we wanted to drill into which customers may or may not be impacting the system and driving costs. So revenue requirement, we'll talk a little bit more about this. Again, this is our balance or deficiency that we develop based on the current revenues and expenses that we're projecting going forward. And we want to make sure again, we're incorporating that renewal and replacement costs that we have for the system. Looking at things like the ending reserve fund balances that we have cash available for both cash flow needs within utility between when they incur cost, when they build a customer and then they get the revenue from the customer. We need to make sure we have a cash flow between that. Typically, this is a five to 10-year period. We like to look out now, especially with impacts and inflation and more of that 10-year period so that we can anticipate capital and try to maintain that escalation as we go out over time. And we typically look at setting rates for a shorter amount of time, around two to five years, just because our assumptions can become outdated relatively quickly. So after that two to five-year period, we find that our assumptions have changed quite a bit. We want to look at the water utility on a standalone basis. So making sure it's an enterprise fund that we're not using funds from other city enterprises or other sources to support the rates. We want to make sure that we're developing the rates that are at a sufficient level to pay for the costs that we are incurring. And we utilize a cash basis methodology. So that was the components that I talked about. There's just two different methodologies and that's the methodology that looks at O and M capital, debt service and funding of reserves essentially. So some of the policy discussion, these are just some areas that we'll look at within the study and that we can dive into. And often we'll help people develop these in a written format. And that can help guide future councils and future staff as to why we made decisions and why we are currently making the same decisions to the level of reserves, for example, how many days of O and M we want to hit on some of our contingency reserves. Looking at that level of renewal and replacement in the system, making sure that that's at an adequate level. You can go into asset management, getting proactive as to establishing your capital plans and then funding that level as we go forward. So there's a lot to consider here, and these are just a few that we will incorporate into the study as we go along where they're practical. Well, that was the revenue requirement. Again, that's the first analysis that gives us our overall level of rate revenues that we need to have as a water utility. The next analysis is the cost of service. And this is where I talked about, we look at the proportionality between customer classes, who's driving costs. For a water utility, again, average day, how much water they just use, the amount of water peaking, how that affects the system, the sizing of pipes, pump stations, tanks, all that is impacted by peaking. So we want to incorporate some of those costs. We want to make sure that we're avoiding subsidies between those customer classes and the cost of service will help us do that. So where we can look at again, based on the engineering side of utility and how we have to size the system, develop the system to meet the needs of those customer classes. The cost of service helps us to identify what those costs are for each of those customer classes. And from the cost of service, we develop average unit costs based on the overall amount of costs that we have and divided by the unit that we're charging and those we can bring into the rate design to make sure that we're closing the loop and using the costs that we're developing rates to develop the actual rate schedule that we charge customers. So this is a little bit busy, but I'll try to walk through it. So if we look at on minus the far left, the dark gray box says total expenses. That represents again, the O and M, the capital, the all those costs that we consider in the revenue requirement. And what we want to do is functionalize them. So source of supply, that's purchase water. That's a pretty easy one. You'll have distribution costs, pumping and storage. And we'll look at again, how the water system functions. And that helps us to then move the costs into those blue buckets, the consumption related, that's your average day water usage, your peak related and your customer related. Once we have the costs in those buckets, I'll call it, we then look at the proportional relationship between the different customer classes. So we're in this example, we have residential, multifamily and non-residential consumption or average day, that's an easy one. We just look at the total usage within a customer class, compare that to the total usage and that is their proportional share of those costs that we have distributed into that bucket. We do that for all of those blue boxes there for each of the customer classes. And then we can aggregate those costs on the far right in the red boxes for each customer class. Now we give us an approximation of what the cost of service or cost to provide water service to those customers is. We then, oh, sorry, one more. We then compare that to the existing revenue that they contribute to the system. And that's where we look at the proportionality between customers, the subsidization, is there one customer class that's contributing more than their fair share or less? And again, this is a little bit of art and science because it is based on one-year water usage, right? So there are impacts due to weather, other things that can go into this. So and this is the first time in the recent years that the city has undertaken a cost of service. So when we do go through those results, we just want to make sure that we don't rely too heavily on, you don't want to just use one data point, right? As, as to where we are and where we're going to go, but it gives us that first data point. And then when you can update these every five to 10 years with the cost of service part, that gives us more data points and we can see, oh, I see, you know, this customer class is still of contributing more or less. And then we would propose to make adjustments based on that. Go through. And this slide just summarizes what some of the components that we can get through the cost of service, reflecting the usage and facility requirements of each customer class, providing the city with the information for the rate structures that we design based on the cost, the unit cost analysis that we do in the cost of service. And ultimately to make sure that those rates are proportional to what we're charging the customer and the cost. There's a direct relationship between those two. But finally, we can get into the rate design, the third and final analysis. So we take what we learned in the revenue requirement, the overall level of revenue that we need. We look at the cost of service to tell us, okay, proportionally, which customer class needs to contribute what level of revenues. And then through the rate design, we use that in conjunction with goals and objectives of staff and you all to come up with what our proposed rates will be. Next. So these are a couple of the goals and objectives that are typically looked at. And it's important to note, going through that list, some of them are at odds with each other, right? So we have to go through this process and think about the hierarchy of which ones, you know, mean more for us or to the community. For example, you may have for revenue sufficiency and stability, right? You have 100% fixed charge. Everybody's charged the same amount. It's a very predictable rate structure, but it's not proportional and equitable for the customer because each customer uses a different amount of water. So that's just an example. All of these have benefits and drawbacks. And so that's just part of what we go through in the rate design process. And we can consider some of these, knowing that we may have to make decisions between them. We can't have all of them as a goal and objective. To talk about some of the terms I've been using. So structure versus level, level is that how much revenue do we need to collect? And then we look at the structure is, okay, how are we going to collect that? So the fixed and variable charges. Fixed typically for water is based on meter size. And it's that fixed component, not based on usage, the variable charges, then that usage component based on how much water you use. And if there's any tiers or that are applicable as well. So this is, this slide talks about the structure. So when we look at rate structure versus the cost structure, there are differences. So in a utility, the vast majority of costs are fixed in nature, which is typically the opposite of how we collect costs. So there's an inverse in that. And it's nothing that necessarily drives things too much, but it's important to know when we're talking about this, that you know, the utilities costs are very fixed in nature. If depending on usage, you know, you have salaries and benefits that we're always going to be paying debt service especially, right? Those components are a very large part of the total costs. And the variable components are a smaller proportion, but with most utilities, they collect more on the variable charge because there is a perception and it isn't wrong that, you know, the customers can help, you know, impact their own bills and it's in their control more from doing that. So, and there is an argument to be made, obviously, that there is a certain amount of that variable revenue that is essentially fixed and that makes up the difference that we see. But we don't want to get too dependent on a variable source. We want to be careful with that when we design rates. Because if you have drought or water curtailment, those kinds of things, or a wet winter, right? We can see impacts on the variable side. So we just want to be cognizant of that as we design rates. Then this slide just shows the current rates. So we have the same rate structure for all customers. The fixed charge on the left-hand box by meter size, that's a pretty contemporary and traditional approach that's been used for a long time. We vary the meter size typically by the safe operating capacity of the meter. So we'll look at basically how much water can go through that pipe. That's their potential capacity on the system. And so we're charging customers based on their meter. And that's their potential impact to the water utility, their potential usage. We then look at the variable charge. You have a four-tiered structure. The first 3,000 is included within the fixed charge. And then we have three to 6,000, six to nine and over 9,000. And that's on the water usage that the customer would use. We then have the outside differential, which is 200% or double what the inside city rate is. So schedule-wise, we want to come first with this kind of educational piece. Get your feedback. Come back in January probably with our preliminary results. And that will be revenue requirement, cost of service rate design. Today, we work with staff on the revenue requirement side, trying to think of different assumptions we need to work into the model. So by January, we should have then that set and a proposal to you for a rate structure alternative and the status quo rates. We'll then look at getting your feedback and input on that. Come back the next month to get the final proposal based on that. And targeting a March 1st rate implementation in 2024. So that is all I had. If you guys have any questions or want to have discussion. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. So a tiered structure, very much so. Now, as part of the process, we'll look at the consumption data for the city by customer class, by tier and all that, and we'll do some analysis. And so we'll be able to come back and show where the water usage is. And there are some ranges that we typically target with those tier sizes. So once we have that information, we can say, okay, the tier one consumption, you know, this looks a little on the low side. I would probably expand those a little. Also with the costing of the tiers, typically when we look at the peak usage, we'll see a little bit greater spread within those costs. So you'll have a little bit more of a cost incentive between the tiers. So you may see instead of 60, 50, 60 cents, you may see more, more than that. So the methodology we use will, will determine that. And there is leeway within that, you know, that we can input policy on it, but yeah, we can, we'll come back with those to show you.
And well, your typical residential, is that going to be the three quarters?
I believe so. I would imagine typically, your typical customers are three-quarter inch meter, correct? Yeah, okay. You see in California, sometimes they're going towards the one inch, just do a fire flow, but mostly around the country, I see the majority is a three-quarter inch.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the justification. If you're, if you're going to gain more because you're using more. Yeah, just the size of the meter. How does that justify, does it justify mortal bands on the system, not in terms of usage?
It can. And that's where we ratio up based on the meter size. We anticipate, yes, a two-inch meter would typically use more water. And so that's why we have that ratio of costs between those. You're not going to see residential customer with an inch and a half or two-inch meter, maybe an inch and a half if it's a very big house. But typically you're going to see a three-quarter or a one-inch. And so that would be more of commercial or multifamily customers that would have that.
Any other questions?
Yeah. How do you factor in the changes that are occurring at the Medford Water Commission? Because we buy our water from them and I don't know if that's considered fixed or variable. How does that, would that factor into the city's analysis?
Yeah, yeah. Good question. And actually, I've been trying to work closely. My colleague Sean Corn is working with Medford Water Commission and they, I think, I think they came out, it might have been today with their public hearing is coming out, I think, in a few months. And so we'll know specifically on those numbers, but he's trying to give me a range so that I can put it that into the model. But we have a line item, the cost. And so we have escalation factors for each line, budget line item. And we increase those based on that. So we have a specific factor that we're using. And we'll, we'll get the history of rates and then we can get a little bit of information from him as to the trajectory of that based on what he's anticipating. And so we'll factor that into the rates as a total cost.
The, the Water Commission is making some changes to the, I guess their pH or the treatment of water before it's purchased by the member cities. And so that's going to affect the purchase cost. And, and then that has to be translated into our rates, right?
Yes, yeah, yep.
Is that the same thing as the presentation we had recently about the expansion of their? Was that wastewater? Yeah, you're right. It was wastewater. And that's not going to impact any of our water costs. RVSS, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
And I think Eleanor was asking a question about the influence of, well, are the, the results of promoting conservation? How does that typically work into the rate analysis?
Yeah. So I anticipate and without seeing the, or having the final results on it, but I anticipate that these tiers are going to spread and the costs will become greater. And so that is where you'll see that conservation incentive is in the unit price costing of those tiers. And that'll help lower users. You may see that come down a little and then larger users will see a little bit larger increase, just based on, again, we look at pipe diameter, we look at average and peak day use. So, you know, we have to size the system, say at six inch to meet average day needs. We need to then go up to a 10 or 12 inch to meet those peak summer usage. So we look at the delta between those sizes and we can figure out the cost based on those surrogates of what is a peak day cost. That's kind of how we go through it.
Wait a minute. I, I'm sorry. I, the question I asked about the water, yes, we did have a presentation on the wastewater, but also not long before that, wasn't there some expected increases in cost for an expansion on DUF? Is it, are they expanding DUF 1 or are they going to build DUF 2?
Good question. I, I believe they're expanding DUF 1. And of course, those typically are accounted for in the systems development charges. And of course, those typically are accounted for in the systems development charges that they they charge us and we pay them when with new development. The other costs associated with rates have to do with the treatment, the changes in treatment that they're implementing and then will charge to us once we buy the water.
I think we are expecting some additional increases with, with the changes in Duff one. I, I don't think any of us can remember what it was, but I think there's additional ones. SDCs, yes, but also I think they were doing some stuff, they were talking about doing some reserves for. I thought I heard that they were creating, they were increasing the rates to create some reserves for some of that project.
The Duff two.
I can't remember if they're going to build up two or if they're just going to expand F one, but I do remember talking about the increases in rates. Anyway, I think it's the same point that we're all making here. I just I think it's important for all to know that there's going to be something, I think significant increases coming down the pipe.
And the balloon payments that we might anticipate have to do with infrastructure that's already been built.
Yes.
System.
Yep, existing des- densities that we have.
And that's, that balloon payment is due when? Don't we have, don't we have one pretty short term?
First balloon, I think twenties.
Can I ask a question about that? Cause I, I mean, just since we're talking about rates. Oh, yeah, sorry. All right, this is a little off topic, but I guess just that since we're talking about that balloon payment. I, I recall that we were, we were making payments against the balloon. Are you saying we haven't been making any payments against the balloon payment or are we going to increase them?
Um, how it's structured, if I recall, we are paying, we're making payments and then the, we're making payments and then for some reason the interest peels back in these years between now and the balloon payment. And so what we're trying to think of, of ways to smooth this out and pay the additional interest. So we don't get burdened with a hit with a one point one million dollar payment.
So you're going to use the peel back as payment basically?
Correct. And then what we have to do is we're going to have to take a look at, after we go through this rate study, we're going to have to take a look at how much we can actually pay. Because the more we pay on this before the balloon payment is due, impacts our rates.
I just, I just seem to recall that when we said all of that, I, if it's the one I'm thinking of, the one that we talked about, I don't know, maybe five years ago, something like that. I just recall that it was set up that it would be paid down by that time. And I'm just wondering if there was a shift along the way.
Um, I don't know the answer to that question. I do believe it was a consolidation of debt that, that's
That's about five years ago. That's right.
I think it was five years ago. I think it was during the time of Tom Corrigan.
Tom Corrigan.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I think it's worth looking at because I, I remember the presentation suggesting that, that this, the, the schedule that we were on would eliminate that balloon payment by the time we got to it.
Not according to the actual schedule from the bonding agency. So I've had discussions with them on what do we do if we want to pay this down? We actually have to fill out some paperwork in advance. It's got to be budgeted for, there's a lot of pieces and parts that's involved in order to pay this off before it's due.
Yeah, I wonder where, where we deviated and why, or if we even ever got on that track, actually.
No.
Yeah. Interesting. Okay. Well, I, I'm
We want to
I, I don't mean to take us down a rabbit hole, but it is, it does sort of help.
It's in the first and foremost, in my thought, my thought process is we got to avert having those balloon payments because if I leave, I don't want it to be forgotten and all of a sudden you tell surprised, hey, guess what? You know, you have a balloon payment and not planned for it.
Yeah.
So that's what we want to do and keep it in, in your, in your council packets on a monthly basis. I keep that, that loan schedule there in front of you. So everyone knows that there are payments due and when the payment dates there and that the dates at this point in time.
What we don't see is the, how the schedule impacts the future payments and, and so you know, if that ever got off course in some way at some point in time between Tom Corrigan and this date, we, we would have no way of knowing that. So that would be an interesting tool to have as well.
Absolutely. But as, as we go through this rate model, I mean, everything is going to be very transparent. You're going to see what we're, we're going to be doing. Yeah. So, and we don't want it to be lost in the shuffle years on, years later.
Thank you for entertaining my questions.
So, you know, we talked about rate structure, conservation. Maybe the right structure. And if you've talked about, you know, one class of customers that desire to another class, definitely not wanting to do that. So I'm just wondering, do other municipalities, utilities have a way to build equity into their rate schedules to, you know, thinking about families versus personal surprises perhaps?
Yeah. So, and it's, it's important to there's a rate equity and then there's more of like the more a social type of equity. And so within rate making, the methodologies we go through don't specifically address a social type of equity. They're, they're concerned with a proportional share of costs. Now that doesn't mean through policy, you can't try to reach those customers, but going through this process, there won't be that as a, a driving force within the mechanics of the model. Does that make sense?
Yeah, except if, I mean, what way to think about it, I don't know if this is something industry does is things that are residential customers shouldn't have to have the same burden as commercial customers or in business. You know, survival rates versus making that. So, yeah, maybe that's what I'm saying.
You can, some people will go through, if you have a different resource stack profile for like how, what types of water you have, there may be more expensive water. Sometimes they can go through prioritization and issue the, the cheaper source water to that. Those are some of the mechanisms. You don't have a different source. It's all a single source, but that's trying to think of some other ways, you know, outside of a customer assistance programs that can go towards that. But the design through the M one manual is to utilize the, the system impacts as the basis for what we charge customers. So how, how many of them, you know, how many customers there are, what size meter and their actual usage, that's the main driving force behind the mechanics from the M one. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, from a, from a utility perspective, right? Yeah. Just making sure that we're trying to recover the costs in the way that they're incurred. That's
And I could follow up on something, you said a customer assistance program or something like that. But that's something that could be built into the rate in some way that like, I know some utilities have you can pay a little bit more and help somebody out, maybe they're giving those whatever. Is that something that could be part of this rate study or would that be like a separate financial thing?
Uh, it, there, so there, that what you're talking about is like bill levelization, typically like electric utilities may do that. That is, you know, there's a lot of administration that goes on with it, but there's no difference in costs. They just kind of true up at the end of the year. A lot of customer assistance programs, you'll need to look at how you pay for those programs. So there is a bit of an exercise going through and we worked with clients on this, but it, it is a little bit more of all bring those goals and objectives to you all. We'll fill them out, rate them. We'll have discussions on that piece, how much we want to fund, what demographics we want to address. You know, there's, there's seniors, there's low income, there's low income seniors. There's a lot of different target audiences. So it is a little bit more of an exercise, given that. And there's also a billing system component of it, right? We want to make sure that the current billing system can do these things as well as staff time because eligibility is a huge component of offering those programs. And so we just want to be eyes wide open to what the additional costs would be within going down that path.
Any other questions or comments? I see, we appreciate your analytical mind and your
The test year, is that going to be starting this year?
Yes. So we're anticipating March first. So fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four is the current fiscal year. We'll have three months of an adjustment. So that's the test year that we will use will be this year.
So I do start it in March or up until March?
The March first will be the implementation date.
Okay.
And that mimics what Medford does as well. So we would be on this, a similar path forward.
So your test day is coming for which month?
The, the test year would be this current fiscal year. So the costs for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. The, the months that we would have the rate change effective would be starting March first through
Okay, so you're able to look at past data. Data from before today.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, it's kind of a pro forma, look at that.
Okay. So I was wondering whether you could submit in the past to if we have that or not, something we can go out and figure out.
You can, there's I don't want to bore you with details. There, there's a lot of different ways that people look at it. They'll look at based on historical and project forward, that based on budget project forward. We like to utilize documents that have been approved, public documents, vetted, things like a budget, right? There's been this long administrative record with the process that you all go through. So that's typically why we default to that approach is because that as well as capital plans, things like that are all readily available to the public. Whereas some of that financial history is, is difficult unless you have a, a lot of, you know, all the financial reporting and things back. So
That makes sense. Like, I guess I was thinking about just like water usage history.
Yes.
Picture over here when we, if we haven't get that, I guess, if we were collecting the data.
Yes. Yeah, good question. No. So for water usage, we'll look at specifically the most recent twelve months. Now, given your situation with what's gone on, we are looking back before the pandemic as well as the fire, right? So that, because things have changed. So we're trying to incorporate all those. So we are looking back a little bit further, but yes, we typically look a few years in, in the past with clients that I work with, but for you all, we are looking back to try to make sure we're anticipating, you know, the rebuild effort. There's growth from that as well as other things we have to consider.
All right. Anything you want to add? So, all right.
We'll, we'll be back with draft results again, probably January so that we can talk about some of them first.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Conversation.
Thanks.
Anything else, Tom?
No, ma'am. I, I think that was pretty helpful.
Well, if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and close the study session and we'll see you at the regular council meeting at six forty five.